If you want to go to the council, could you come forward, give it for names and address? And you'll have about thirty minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, do you actually mind really quickly if I put a couple of things in here? Real fast. Okay, excellent. I wanted to make the council aware that we had a staff member that got a pretty high honor the other night, and he's not going to like that I'm going to have him come up, but I'm going to have him come up anyway. So Chief Ladwig, go ahead and come on down. The floor is getting ready to be yours. On Saturday evening at the NAACP event, Chief Ladwig was presented with the Jack McBride Community Service Award, and that is a really incredible honor. And anyone who knows anything about Mr. McBride and all of his accomplishments here in our community and beyond, again, such an incredible honor. So I'm not going to make you give a full speech or anything like that, but you do have to hold your plaque and talk a little bit about it.
Well, the first thing I will say is I wasn't able to make it. Attended a wedding of a friend. I had no idea that this was coming. And I was sent the picture of it, and I was speechless. Very humbled, very honoring. My name is on the plaque. However, I don't know that I accept accolades that well. When I talk about the police department, and something I learned from Mayor Myers was it's never "I did this," or "I do this," or "I got that done." It's "we." You know, it's a team at the police department, and all of the officers, sergeants, lieutenants, and support staff. It's a team sport, and we accomplish things. And I, this really, to me, is for all of them because they do all the heavy lifting, and they're out there taking the calls every day. And that's how I look upon what my position is, is I'm the big cheerleader, you know, the big toe. And I, it's, it's just literally, you know, I'm speechless, very humbled and honored. Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to point out before we get our meeting going tonight is I want to introduce Bree West, and she has already told me she doesn't want to come down. She's a little shy. So if you could just wave, Bree. Excellent. Bree is our administrative analyst. She is taking over our grant programs. She helps up in the admin office, and she's also assisting with HR. So we're happy to have her back full-time with the City of Fulton family. She spent quite a considerable amount of time with us through an internship as well and got us through a time where the city actually was looking for an HR professional. So we're really fortunate to have her back full-time in the City of Fulton family and glad you could be here with us tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're certain, and glad to have her back. And I want to say real quick, I was at the banquet, NAACP banquet the other night. I thought it was, they did an excellent job. The food was great. I'm not sure how many people were there. I would say, do you know, Bob, probably about 150, 200?
We sold about 190 tickets, so it was a good crowd.
Yeah, great crowd. Program was really good. And we had a young man, I think he did junior in high school here, that was probably the last speaker, but he did an outstanding job. And I was able to see him yesterday at the high school, and he did an equally good job there at the Veterans Appreciation at the high school yesterday. So really great time that night, and saw a lot of good people that I hadn't seen for a while, and it was well, well-attended. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from October 8th and October the 22nd. Also, the Super Sam Foundation Turkey Trot on November the 23rd at 7:00 to 11:00 a.m. And the appointment of Rod Laddie to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a partial term at this time. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. As written.
Very well. Motion's been made in second to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We have no unfinished business. Under new business tonight are the executive director of the Callaway Chamber of Commerce, Tamara Totison is here. We're very fortunate to have her, and they have been doing some amazing things this year, and she's had some amazing accolades this year that I hope you'll share some of those with us, too.
Okay.
You do a great job, and your staff is, I've attended several functions, and great job. I couldn't, couldn't, I got a questionnaire the other day about how you all were doing, and it was easy to fill that out.
Thank you.
So I'll give it to you.
Well, we had a little bit of technical difficulty, so you all have a copy of my presentation in front of you if you'd like to follow along, or I can just talk. So this is my end-of-the-year report to you all. Just as a reminder, we have a very strict strategic plan that we follow that involves workforce development, economic development, our advanced business excellence education, that's K through 12, our college, our university, and our small business, supporting our entrepreneurs, our financial sustainability, and maximizing our operations. Now, we have tourism on there, which is a new one, and then delivering value to our members. So I'll start with economic development. So far this year, we've had 11 requests from the Missouri Partnership for RFIs. We've had 10 economic development projects that did not come through Missouri Partnership. We actually have three of those that are currently still active and one that has been complete, giving us a total of 21 industrial economic development projects. Next, we had our HWI announcement. This was one of the, this one that's complete here on economic development. That was a $13.9 million capital investment with 11 new jobs. They're building a new site behind their old site that is over by the city warehouse. It was a collaborated effort, and we have three press releases that you will find that I laid on your desk. And one of them is from HWI, one of it's from Missouri Department of Economic Development, and the other one is from the Chamber of Commerce, so that, just in case you did not see that Supporting entrepreneurs, this year we've had 62 clients in the office working on business plans or problems and issues with their business, or even succession planning, and 173 business retention visits. As a reminder, in September, we held our first conference here. I think it went really well. That was the Connecting Entrepreneurial Conference. We had about 125 people in attendance. One of the messages that I sent to those that actually are the planners of this is they really need to pay attention to the schedules of other big conferences that's going on in the state. For example, you guys were gone to a conference the first couple of days and were unable to attend. If that impacted you, that impacted people all the way across the state, and those are the people that they want in those seats. So I think that was a good reminder to them, and they can work on that as they plan the event moving forward. We had a great time with the street, little street vendor fair that we did. We had a lot of people from the community that came down and had food, the feedback that we got from the businesses, they enjoyed it. I went and saw the businesses that were open, and one of them that I walked into at the Historical Society, I was like, "So, how's it going tonight?" And he said, "I've had 27 people in here in the last hour." So to me, that said they were going in the buildings because if they were at the Historical Society learning about all the stuff, and then one gentleman walked in and he said, "I know I've already been here twice, but I've got an idea," and he wasn't even from our community. So I think they had a good time visiting with the people from outside of Callaway County, from Missouri, and from other surrounding states. So we just finished our pitch competitions on November 1st, and you will see the pictures of our winners. We held our collegiate, our teen, and our adult pitch competitions all on the same day. Mayor Myers was one of our judges. We also had Rob Russell, that he was, he's the senior director with MU Extension, and then we also had Amanda Stoddard, and she is a realtor in our community. So our first-place winner for the collegiate was Ann by Allison. Our teen pitch competition, our first place was Social Solutions. And our show innovation adult, our first-place winner was Flutter Lash Lounge, and they're actually looking for a brick-and-mortar in our community. So that's exciting. That award money is going out just as soon as they check all of their boxes, to say they've gotten a business license, are registered with the state, all of the things to make them a legitimate business. The next thing is workforce development. We held National Manufacturing Day and took these students. We had a job fair at the FRDC. We did, are doing a monthly workforce roundtable discussion, so every single month we have a workforce roundtable discussion. The next one is tomorrow, so we have a speaker that's there for about 20 minutes to kind of talk about the programs that they have that help with workforce, and then our business community can just kind of talk about problems and issues, ideas and suggestions, things that they actually need from us. And then spring and fall job fairs, so we actually had one today out at Callaway Electric Cooperative. You know, job fairs are one of those things that's really hard to get people in attendance, but we had lots of people that came in, visited. Some of them were actually clients that our workforce development coordinator has been working with. So that was actually exciting for her to see them come in and have, utilize the skills that she's been working with them on, their resume, you know, being presentable for their job interactions, setting up those job interviews, et cetera. This year, we launched a junior leadership Callaway program that mirrors our adult leadership program. So we have eight participants in this program. As you can see, this is a picture from past, present, and future of Callaway County. They're having a good time, and they are really enjoying learning more about our community. And these are, you know, leaders of our future here in our community. Next, we've had some groundbreaking ceremonies and lots of ribbon cuttings that have marked lots of occasions of some real, you know, 50 years, 35 years, 40 years, but these three groundbreakings, I just wanted to kind of mention. Leadership Callaway, class of 2024, did a groundbreaking for their sensory park that is going in right down here. Thank you to Parks and Rec for assisting us with that. William Woods University, they have a new residence hall, and then Carver School Senior Apartments. The next thing is what we're calling Callaway Connection, and this is the families and the faces behind the businesses. And so what we're trying to do is to get some information from our businesses on how they do business with other businesses, and then put that information out there so that people can really kind of connect the dots on how important it is to do business with other businesses in our community and support one another. So we have put that out, and we are getting some of our members that are sending in their picture, a little bit of bio, and then sending us these lists of all the people that they're doing business with. And some of them were having to send back and say, "Hey, that business is not in Callaway County, but this is a business that is in Callaway County that you could actually support." So you'll probably start seeing those stories here in the next couple of weeks. That's something that Amy is currently working on, and we're really excited about this, and the businesses are excited about being able to be showcased as well. Next, tourism. So we have a lot of things that are going on with tourism. That means we are the digital marketing organization for Callaway County. So Amy is now our tourism and marketing manager. So she does all the marketing for the chamber, and then she takes care of tourism. Right now, she is working on some digital marketing campaigns that actually targets people out of Kansas City, Chicago, and Springfield. So she's trying to get outside instead of just trying to market to the people that are here in our community for tourism, because we want to bring in those tax dollars from other places and even other states. Also, she just received a grant to be on the Visit the USA website, so she is working on that program right now. So hopefully, by the time I talk to you guys, we'll be on that website to help market our community on the US, Visit USA map. And then we'd ask that you please follow us on Facebook, on the Visit Fulton Facebook page. It is different than the Chamber Facebook page, but we're trying to grow a crowd. And if you have people that are outside of this community, make sure you share things that are going on. One of the things that we did implement a couple of months ago was her giving a report during the Callaway County Community Update on things that are happening with tourism and bringing some attention to those activities. And the people in our community don't really understand what's going on either and need to know about those activities. So if you have something that is, would be of interest to people to do things with their family and their friends, or just a day trip here in our community, make sure you send that to Amy, because she wants to make sure she gets that stuff on the calendar. Yeah, she's doing a really good job, and she lo, absolutely, this is her wheelhouse. Marketing is her wheelhouse. Then our upcoming events, we have an ambassador Christmas lunch. We do this every year to thank our ambassadors for helping with ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings and with our events. This is also the time they get their ambassador picture taken, and then they get to vote on who the ambassador of the year is going to be for 2024. Our holiday business after hours will be held at Westminster College on Tuesday, December 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then our 2025 Annual Banquet is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And this is going to be the first event ever at the Callaway Jewel, so we're really super excited about that. We have a hard number of 300 that we can get in there, but it's a beautiful, beautiful facility and can't wait to be there. So last but not least, I gave you a press release last week. Brianna and I attended the CCEM Conference, which stands for Chamber of Commerce Executives of Missouri, and we were recognized for, with an Award of Excellence for the Local Lemon Program. Brianna does such a fantastic job with that program and working with those kids and teaching them about being an entrepreneur, and we saw some of those kids down there during the CEC Conference selling their things, and they were using all of their tools that they used and had in their toolbox. But it's just a really great program, and we're excited that we were able to kind of share that with the other Chamber of Commerce executives. So there was lots of questions about the local lemon and how it works, and of course, we have their Saturday lemonade sales, which is always a fun thing. So I will entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
I would like to congratulate you on the presidency.
Thank you. Oh, I forgot, you told me to tell what I did. Yeah, I'm not good at that. Oh, okay, so for 2025, I will be the president of the Chamber of Commerce Executives of Missouri. So I'm really excited about that and this opportunity to get to do that and serve this organization. So it's really kind of our professional development organization. We do Chamber Management Academy that helps not only those that are just coming into the chamber industry, but also those that have been in the industry for a long time and kind of need a refresher. We provide scholarships to Institute for Organization Management, which is what I got, the IOM, with the US Chamber of Commerce. We also do a fall conference, and that's strictly professional development, talking about all the things that are new and upcoming, learning what other communities are doing. And then we also do a quarterly chamber chat on a specific topic that, you know, we all need to be informed about. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and keep up the good work. You and your staff are doing an outstanding job.
They are knocking it out of the park.
Our city and our community and our county, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Henchy.
We had our Public Safety Commission meeting on 10/24 at 5:30 p.m. Unfortunately, I was in Europe at that time, but the majority of it was about speeding and also about a stop sign, which was decided not to be installed because it would cause congestion in that area. And then I have no further concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman West.
The Human Rights Commission has not met since our last meeting, and I have no concerns tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Reclu.
Yes, I'm on the Public Safety Commission. Our next meeting's 21st coming up, so if we haven't met since the last meeting. And basically, a lot of, like you said, on the speeding, and we discuss things about different stop signs and things that we're going to do, perhaps, and I have no other concerns tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Stone.
Yes, first, I want to wish a Happy Veterans Day to all of the city employees and staff. And then the Historic Preservation Commission will meet next Monday at 1:00 p.m. It meets the third Monday of every month at 1:00 p.m. in the Executive Conference Room.
Councilman Stone.
Has that been changed?
It has. They decided to cancel for the months of November and December because they had all their work complete for this year.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Never mind. We'll be meeting in, we'll be meeting the third Monday in January. Hope to see everybody there. And then I have no concerns.
Thank you. Councilman Luther and Councilman Combs couldn't be with us tonight, so we'll move on to Councilman Washington.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I got to see Parker in person yesterday, and he's looking good. He's looking healthy, and they're doing well.
Excellent. Okay, Councilman Washington.
No concerns at this time, here. I believe we haven't had a park board meeting coming up soon, is that?
It's January.
In January, okay. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add, make sure my light's on, Chief Ladwig, a very humble person. He spoke at the NAACP meeting the other night. He received the award, and they're very thankful. He did an outstanding job. He's humble as he was tonight. He's a real person, and I appreciate that. He shared with us, if there's some of his officers, that he hired some new officers coming in, and we get a chance to see them a little bit later on in the future, but we were very appreciative of what he had to share with us and shared concerns when an officer that he sees is not measuring up to being a services for the people, all people in Fulton. They're kind of on a shaky, he has no problem letting them go, said, "You're not a good fit for this community," and he'll let them go. And I appreciate that because I have seen him in action in the times past in dealing with a situation for me, that he found that an officer wasn't measuring up to the standards that the children have for this community, and he said, "You have to let them go." And I appreciate that, so I appreciate you, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate you for putting towards this community. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There was a utility board meeting. Unfortunately, due to a time change, I wasn't able to make it. Darryl, are there any updates you'd like to give? Nothing of concern? And I have no concerns tonight.
To add a little bit to what Councilman Stone said, I wish all veterans working for the city the best. Certainly, I attended quite a few veteran events over the weekend, and I was, I was proud and honored to do that. We had one up the courthouse here that was well-attended. The high school yesterday afternoon was very well-attended, so it's always an honor to be able to honor our vets, so. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 3558, that's a DNR Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Councilman West, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution 3558, DNR Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to make application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program for financial assistance with the Missouri Clean Water Law, Chapter 644 Revised Statute of the State of Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3558 at this council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I want to add that Anna and Darryl and Kyle worked very closely and hard with Burns McDonald and DNR to put this together, and so I, I hope this is going to be a successful grant for us. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to Resolution 3559, which is the SLCGP Cyber Security Grant, and Councilman Henchy, would you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3559, SLCGP Cyber Security Grant. A resolution by, of the City of Fulton, Missouri authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to make application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the state and local cybersecurity grant program issued through the Missouri Department of Public Safety and the Office of Homeland Security, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3559 at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. Do we have questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Motion carries. Now we have Resolution 3560. It's the contract with the Chamber of Commerce. Councilwoman Reclu, would you read that for us, please?
Yes. Resolution 3560, Contract with the Chamber of Commerce. A resolution of the City of Fulton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to enter an agreement with the Callaway Chamber of Commerce of Fulton, Missouri for services to be rendered in 2025 and establish an effective date, and make a motion for Resolution 3560 for second reading at next meeting.
Second.
No, there won't be a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. At this council meeting, sorry.
Okay.
Is this your second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any questions?
I don't remember discussing anything about the payment segment. Did I miss something?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so that's the.
I don't remember discussing anything about the payment that's been made. Did I miss something?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so that's the, the senior payment that's been in the contract for quite some time, and that's what's also built into the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, it passed. Thank you. Now we'll move on to ordinances. Councilman Stone, will you be, read Bill Number 1733 for us tonight, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1733, Schedule of Fees and Charges, otherwise known as Rate Book 2025, An Ordnance Adopting an Official Schedule of Fees and Charges for the City of Fulton, Missouri, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025. I make a motion for, to move Ordinance 1733 for second reading in our next scheduled meeting.
Very well. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I'm okay with, with this. I would just ask that we take a look at it between now and the next meeting, and maybe round these to the nearest dollar. The one that caught my eye was the recycling cart fee. It went from $2 to $2.02. Okay, let's just leave it at $2 and change the regular one up or something, you know. Just, just take a look at it. I mean, I'm good either way, but it just seems like an odd number.
Yeah, and if there's, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman. If there's no concern with us making that modification, we can absolutely do that. Obviously, it does, it puts us on some weird amounts with that incremental amount.
Right.
So we can absolutely make those adjustments if no one else has any concerns with us doing so.
Okay, any other discussion? I might add that this is long, long overdue. We'll have small increases now through the years rather than wait five or six years and have a large increase, and I think that's much better. Councilman Stone?
The, the airport hangars, have those fees been discussed with, with the parties that are usually actively involved with the, what's, what's the committee? What's the board? Is it the, just the Airport Advisory Board? Has that gone through the Airport Advisory Board?
Not at this time. We, and I'll be, I'm just going to be honest with you. That's not a real board. That's not in our charter. So they will all be notified, yes, but they'll be notified individually.
Okay. I, I understand they're not a chartered board, but they're a board where we get lots of.
Well, they have a Polis Association Board, too. So I'm thinking, and we are all thinking, why would we have two boards when we can just send our representative to the Polis Association, and it's the same thing?
Okay. I just want to make sure that those two boards were notified if the rate changes.
Yeah, they will be. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of Bill 1733, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, thank you. Okay, let me see who that is. It's in the fold. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Bill Number 1734, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1734, Purchasing Policy, Repeal and Enact Section 2-362, An Ordnance Repealing Article 6, Section 2-362, Competitive Bidding of the City of Fulton Code, and Enacting New Legislation Under Article 6, Section 2-362, Purchasing Policy of the Fulton City Code, and Lu thereof. Make a motion, we place Bill Number 1734 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very well, thank you. This is, this is another thing that's long overdue, and I think you've probably all been, been able to review it, but this is probably 10 years overdue. So do you have any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, thank you. Councilman Washington, would you read Bill Number 1735, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1735, Repealing Article 6, Section 2-367 through 2-369 of the City Code, and Ordnance Repealing Section 2-367 through 2-369 of the City Code of Fulton, Missouri, of Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion, I make a motion that we place Bill Number 1635 for second reading at a next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second, Bill Number 1735?
1735. I'm sorry, yes.
Can you, you second that? Okay. Thank you. This is cleaning up the language for the other bill and just in, and before it. So any, Mike, you have something?
I just wondered why this was separate and not include in the other bill. Not a big question, just.
With the first bill, it had so much that was redacted, and with new information placed in there, I didn't want it getting kind of messy with our codifier. So I just did this as a separate standalone, just to wipe and erase.
Okay, thank you. It just becomes problematic if one passes and the other one doesn't, but I don't foresee that.
True, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all of those in favor of Bill 1735, please say yes.
Yeah.
Oppose? Thank you. Now we'll move on to Bill 1736. Councilman Washington, would you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1736, EOC 2025 and 20, through 2026 Service Agreement, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the Callaway County of Missouri to provide a public emergency communication operation service for the City of Fulton for 2025 and 2026, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1736 for second reading at the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Bill 1736, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Very well, thank you. Now we'll move on to second reading. Bill Number 1732, The Budget Amendment. Councilwoman Reclu, would you read that for us?
Mr. Mayor, should I do the third reading also? Thank you, okay. Okay, that's, all right. Bill Number 1732, An Ordnance Authorizing Amendments to the City of Fulton Budget for the Fiscal Year 2024 as outlined by Article 8, Financial Procedure, Section 8.8, Amendments After Adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and Establishing Effective, Effective Date. I make a motion, to make a motion to place Bill Number 1732 for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. Reading again.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, very well. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilwoman, would you read that again for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1732, An Ordnance Authorizing Amendments to the City of Fulton Budget for the Fiscal Year 2024 as outlined by Article 8, Financial Procedure, Section 8.8, Amendments After Adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and Establishing Effective Date, and make a motion to place Bill Number 1372 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second. Very well.
Bill Number 1732.
Yes, oh, yes.
Again, do we have any discussion on this? I think we've discussed it quite, quite often. All in favor of passing 1732 for the third time, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you read, take roll call, please, vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Combs. Six council members affirmative?
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to third reading for Bill Number 1728, and that's our 2025 budget. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that, please?
Gladly, Mr. Mayor. Before I read this, I would just like to thank Courtney and the mayor and our department heads for all the hard work that went into the budget this year. I know that there was a lot of tedious work that happened, and I just really appreciate it because I know how much work really truly went into this. So thank you. Bill Number 1728, 2025 Budget, An Ordnance Adopting an Official Budget and Capital Improvement Program in Appropriating the Funds of the City for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2025, and Ending December 31, 2025. I make a motion for final passage at tonight's council meeting for Bill Number 1728.
Second.
Very well. Do we have any discussion?
I would like to echo Councilman Nelson's appreciation to all that worked on this. It was quite a task, and you did admirably. Thank you.
Yeah, as well, I would like to go on record, especially, I'm going to call out our Chief Financial Officer, Dustin, already. I know he did a lot of work on this, so.
Yes.
So.
You notice he doesn't have hair.
Yeah. He used to.
Easy.
Yeah, he used to when it started. No, he does a great job. And I might say that all our department heads worked hard on, on their individual part of the budget, and came together, and Dustin, and, well, Courtney did, too, but, and Sam worked on it as well, so.
The work together is the impressive part.
Yeah, it's a team effort, so.
Exactly.
And they even took time out of their busy schedule to meet with me, and I appreciate that separately. So they gave me some updates. Yep, thank you.
With the directions that were listed, we, we're still balanced budget. Thank you.
They would call meetings, and it was like a blue light special. Everybody was running to it. So it was good times.
The last Kmart closed in the U.S. last month, so.
Now you're dating yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
I worked at Kmart, thank you.
Did you like serve food or something with these?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Bill, to pass Bill Number 1728, for a third reading tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, thank you. That was, that was a good one to get, get over the finish line. Yes, so I'm sorry.
Almost there.
I'll just, I'm excited to get it done.
We're all glad. Mr. Luther, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yep.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs? Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Six council members affirmative?
Very well. Thank all of you for your hard work as well, and support of our, of our staff and the hard work that they do.
I would echo that, Mayor. We could not do it without all of you guys being on the team. I really appreciate all of your support and help, and all the questions and meetings and all those great things. We always want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community, and that's certainly what you're elected to do. So I appreciate you being a voice for, for everyone. And to the team, thank you for being able to hit that super aggressive deadline. Dustin, same thing. He, he put a lot of time and effort into it. So thank you all very much.
It's no number.
It is.
The first meeting of numbers.
Yeah, I, I remember, and probably Mike does, too. We've had budget hearing the last week of the year to get our budget passed by, by the 31st, so, yeah, this is great. Okay, we'll move on to announcements. The next.
We fixed it already. You marked it off.
Oh, yeah. The next council meeting will be November the 26th at 6:30.
Do you have any concerns about that being the same week as Thanksgiving?
Maybe.
I, I would say if, you know, with your schedules, if you do find that you're not going to be able to make it, please let Kathy know as soon as possible. And obviously, if we don't have enough members, we would just cancel that meeting. But for now, I'm not hearing a ton of concerns. And again, if that changes, we'll, we'll make that announcement.
And is the December meeting, is that still scheduled?
That is the hot question. Right now, Kathy, what, what did we come up with? It is the.
Regular scheduled meetings, the first, or the second Tuesday in March.
10th, at 6:30 PM.
That's right.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, before we close out, I would like to hear something from Kyle about the contractor that is doing the demolition, and if he started, or if he, when he's planning on starting, if he's got any information on that. Love to hear from him. There's some people been asking, so.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. I thought I missed my chance to ask the same question. So thank you very much.
Kyle Brimmer, City Engineer. Yes, Bobby, we, we are waiting for the final go-ahead, actually, from the, from the state to let that contractor go. So unfortunately, we're still waiting on this date. We've got everything in place and ready for them. We've got a contractor selected. Mid-Missouri Escavators is the, actually, sorry, I misspoke on that, but our contractor is, is ready to go, and just waiting for them to give that final say-so, so, yeah.
While you're here, if I may, the repayment out here, great job. They, right here on Fourth Street, I think they did a wonderful job. Do you agree?
Definitely a lot better than what was there before.
Yes, sir. Do you agree that it's?
So I'm glad that they came back and fixed the mistake.
Yeah. Are you good with it now? Your staff good with it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
It didn't have to be too good to be better than it was.
True.
Okay, we have the festival lights coming up on December the 5th. I hope to see all of you there. There, the first night, the park will be shut off, so vehicles can't go either way in there, because last year, there was literally some fights in there. And so we're just eliminating that hopefully this year. And then later on, it will be opened the next, maybe we'll see a night or two later that you'll be able to drive through.
Parking lot there, down from the amphitheater, will be closed for this event?
Yes.
Correct, it will be closed. So no through traffic at Veterans Park. However, we will have plenty of parking at, at the Legends Recplex. And if we do have individuals who need mobility assistance, we will also have some golf carts and some people there to assist as well.
Okay, thank you.
So people can drop off, right there by the Little Red Bridge is what I call it. So people can drop off individuals there, and we'll certainly work with them on that. Just want to make sure that it's safe for all of our pedestrians.
Thank you for that accommodation. Yep.
Okay, we don't have a need for an executive session tonight.
Move for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, Chief Lapwicke has one of his new officers here. We want to give him the opportunity to, we like to meet him, if that's possible.
I withdraw my motion.
Actually, I'll bring him both up.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
In case you don't know who everybody is. This is Gavin Maggard. He's from Montgomery County area, and he just went through this last academy class. He's in his field training period right now, and he is being trained by Officer Williams Lopez. And Officer Lopez lives here in town, originally from the state of California, and kind of moved back to be closer to wife's family, right? And they're both doing a great job. Officer Lopez is also a National Guard member in the state of California. He's actually been flying back and forth to go to his guard duty, so he's very dedicated. And he's, they're both doing just a great job, and happy to have them.
Great, thank you.
Did you see them out? Did you see them out?
Always do.
Yes, we're glad to have you on board, and you've got a, got a good teacher here.
Absolutely, sir, thank you. I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move for adjournment.
Okay, we're already adjourned.
You got anything else, Bob? Move for adjournment.
All in favor again of adjourning? Thank you all very much for being here tonight.